Good evening, welcome to Bennington Select Board, Monday, January 26, 2015. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Thank you, everyone. I want to introduce our board. My far left, Tom Jacobs. Michael Kane.
Aye.
Our Vice Chair, Sharon Brush.
Aye.
I'm Greg Van Houten. John McFadden. Jim Carroll is presently absent, we're expecting him, and Justin Corquin is absent this evening. Our Town Manager, Stuart Hurd, and Linda Bermuda is recording. Thank everybody for coming. We meet here in the Firehouse Meeting Room on the first and, or I'm sorry, the second and fourth Monday of every month at 6:00 PM, unless otherwise noted. Announcements tonight, just to start off, the Senior Center and Rec Center are scheduled to be closed tomorrow, Tuesday, due to the impending storm. We're hoping it won't be as doomsday-ish as advertised, but in the event, we want to keep people off the roads and make it safe. So, that's Rec Center and Senior Center so far, closed tomorrow. All right, the first item on the agenda right now is the minutes. We have minutes from January 10th, January 12th, and January 17th. The 10th and 17th are budget work sessions. The 12th was the regular scheduled meeting. So, do I have a motion to approve those?
If there's an objection, oops.
Unless there's any objection, I'd like to move that we vote in all three minutes.
You have a motion to approve all three?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have any discussion? Attendance was the same, it was a fully attended meeting at all three, so, all in favor?
Aye.
That is five, that is passed. Thank you. Warrants. Do we have any questions on the warrants, Tom?
Nothing specific on the warrants. I do have a certain ongoing question relative to the town bidding policy. Do we have a policy? Because I see a lot of names that from month to month are the same, I'm just concerned about how they continue to roll up.
The bidding policy deals with any project purchased that is estimated to be over $1,000. We're supposed to at least get three competitive prices. Sometimes, in certain cases, there aren't people who are specialized in that field, so we may not end up with three. Once you get above that, to the major projects, of course, we bid them, we post them, we do public openings. But if the project is estimated to cost less than $1,000, it's really go out and find the contractor, they can choose a job for you. Most of my department heads who work in that field try to spread that work throughout the community so that everybody gets something, and we look for the contractors that are going to be most cost-effective and most efficient.
Thanks for that.
Michael?
Nothing of substance, no.
Sharon?
I have nothing tonight.
John?
I'm all set.
Okay, I'm caught up as well, thank you. Citizens, do we have any citizens who'd like to bring something to attention to the board? Mrs. Albert?
Good evening, I'm Mary Lou Albert, I'm from Bennington, and I'm here to cordially invite you, the Select Board, and Mr. Hurd, to the Firehouse on February 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The subject will be the negative impacts of fluoridation for Bennington. Now, I know the board's time is valuable, so I have prepared some information packets which may raise some issues you might want to ask at our forum.
Thanks, Ted.
Just watch the cables there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted?
Thank you. So, it's February 19, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, right here.
Yeah, that one's for Stuart.
Yeah, Jim, then we got one first.
That one's for Stuart there.
This one's for Stuart. There we go.
Okay, again, I just wanted-
Mary Lou, could we ask how that will be, how will the forum be organized? Who will be leading it and facilitating?
We're having Annette Smith coming down to moderate it.
Okay.
And we're going to have some local people and some other people from out of state sitting at it, and it's going to be a panel.
Okay.
And it's going to be open to everyone, everyone is welcome.
Okay.
And again, the forum is the 19th of February, and it's from 6:00 to 8:00.
Here in the Firehouse.
Here at the Firehouse, and don't forget to vote on March 3rd.
Is there any Cat TV coverage of this?
Yes, it will be live.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I did want to remind people to register to vote if you're not registered, and that deadline will be pretty close to Election Day, but you want to get it on your schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. All right.
I'm Jerry Albert from Bennington. I guess you answered my question, what, people can still register to vote?
Yes, that's correct.
Up until?
It's pretty close to the actual election day.
Generally, it's like the, I'm going to say the Saturday at 5:00 PM before, provided that the Town Clerk's Office is open, but the laws have changed somewhat over the last few years to make registering to vote much closer to the election time. I would encourage people who want to register to check with the Town Clerk's Office for specific times, and that should be known.
But normal business hours, at least during the week through that week before Town Meeting Day, so the last week of February.
Very good. And one, another question I had, in North Bennington, will the North Bennington voters be voting on Article 15?
Yes, they will.
And, so does the article also cover their water system?
Well, it's an advisory vote, so it's taken as that in both, but they have a separate water charter than we do, a separate water system and control. Though it also gets broken down, North Bennington versus Bennington.
But their vote will count towards the advisory vote?
Yes.
Well, yeah, the totals will be counted, it'll be the same question on both ballots.
Okay. Right, no. And one other thing, do you know off the top of your head how much income that the town receives from the sale of water from Morgan Spring?
It has actually substantially risen this year. We normally budget in the range of $25,000 a year. We're looking at revenues this year, I think, that are going to exceed $40,000. Our contractor is now taking three truckloads a day, not anywhere near the amount they are allowed to take, but a truckload is about 8,000 gallons, so they're taking 24,000 gallons a day, generally. So we have a very aggressive market for the water, and that money is being accounted for.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is that it for citizens?
I have something I want to give the Select Board. Dr. Alexander Tenentis, optometrist in Bennington here, and I wanted to give the Select Board some information that might be helpful with regard to this continuing issue of water fluoridation. Last time I came here, I spoke to you. I showed how great the 99% of the water that is utilized in Bennington each day goes down toilets, drains, et cetera.
Dr. Tenentis, if I may, we're trying to get through here with a storm impending, and we've just been invited to a forum for these types of things, so if you want to briefly introduce it and get the things to us, please, I don't want to get into presentations tonight on this subject.
Got you, got you. Well, I have some things, I made some copies for you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Which I hope I can just go quickly through with you.
Well, we got two missing tonight, so we can always get them come. Thank you.
Did you get one?
No.
Thank you, Doctor. No, I've got, I've got a couple. Here we go. Okay.
This is FDA data that tells you why unapproved drugs are a public health problem. Also shows you, at least one of the many, many pages, you'll find that the NDC, National Drug Code Directory, at the same place through the FDA, showing you that fluoride is unapproved as a drug, and yet is used in humans. I think that's a very important thing for us to be aware of. Also says why are unapproved drugs a public health problem, very, very large heading on these pages when you go to the website for the FDA. And one of the things I want to point out, which is part of the reason, I think, we have this whole controversy to begin with.
Point of order, I think this citizen is out of line. He just mentioned what the purpose of this meeting was, and he's going into the presentation not withstanding our advice.
Sorry, okay, I shall retract my statement and talk about how I'm concerned, as everybody is about this issue, but I think that there's a misconception about-
I think we're doing the same thing I just objected to. Mr. Chairman, would you tell this individual?
In that case, I appreciate your time in allowing me to give you the information that you have in writing there, that will show you a number of things, also identifying the problem, which is not addressed by water fluoridation. From a newsletter to, I believe it's to the childhood, it's called the Bennington County Child Care Association. I guess the newsletter is called Connecting, it's the newsletter of the Bennington County Child Care Association, January, February, and March 2015, it's near the back.
And that's all in here?
Yes, yes, and you can read that, it'll tell you why the problem is, and predictors of tooth loss, okay? And there's some others as well, but they're not in here.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Tenentis, appreciate it. Okay. We're going to move on to, we have a Sister City presentation, I'm going to introduce Gregory Powers. We have been invited by, well, let him explain, but by the city of Tanguan in the Philippines to engage in a Sister City relationship.
Yes, hello, thank you for having me, my name is Gregory Powers. I'm actually here on behalf of Suzie Barra, she is a faculty member at Bennington College, and our presentation, I'll keep it brief, is to introduce a potential Sister City project collaboration between Bennington, Vermont, and Tagum City in the Philippines. And my second objective is to hopefully obtain a signature on a memorandum of understanding between the two cities in order to establish a relationship, which I'll go into depth about what we are hopefully planning to do. First of all, to start, I'm personally interested in this project because my wife who's right here has a friend who is from the Philippines who recently immigrated to Bennington, she's been here for about a year, and myself, through my work, I have contact with a couple students from the Philippines who currently attend Southern Vermont College, so we feel this might be a good way to strengthen a relationship between people of Filipino descent who live in Bennington at this time. The Sister City International Project, it provides an established framework for a city-to-city dialogue and cultural exchange. As of this point, I believe that Bennington has one Sister City in Nicaragua. For example, the city of Pittsfield, Massachusetts has four Sister Cities, so to have more than one would be certainly acceptable. And the project that I'm going to present originated through a class at Bennington College, like I mentioned, where Suzie Barra was the faculty member. This project can be as large or as small as the students in the community decide that it should be. The following goals are what we've established for this project, we'd like to enrich the cultural and social environment of both Bennington and Tagum City, initiate cultural exchange, inspire community development, provide increased opportunities for youth and education, and produce participation incentives for local businesses and trade. To give you a quick background, Tagum City, Philippines is around 215,000 people, very warm climate, near the equator, near the ocean, quite different from Bennington, obviously, but at the same time, it's a strong emphasis on education, strong governmental leadership, and a focus on renewable resources, as well as arts and community involvement. They're all known as the festival city, there's 14 festivals that they host each year. Our primary idea that we'd like to do is to host a festival to occur in either April or May, where Bennington would have a Filipino heritage-type festival, including several ideas such as a hike with a hosted box lunch and discussion of renewable energy, food tasting, film screenings, and also to potentially have artists and residents from the Philippines with the possibility of designing a mural in Bennington. We have also decided that it would be a good idea to use the Quantum Leap program at Mount Anthony Union High School to create a digital pen pal program with students in the Philippines. It would give us the ability to interact with culture half a world away without having to leave Bennington. Our hope is also that other local businesses, organizations, clubs, and churches would join in this endeavor. And again, thank you for listening to this proposal. Like I had mentioned at the outset, the Sister City International Group requires a memorandum of understanding to be signed by the head of each city. The mayor of Tagum City has already agreed to sign, and I'm hoping if the Select Board of Bennington agrees, we'd like to get the signature of Stuart Hurd if possible, so we can move this project forward.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. There were several things in the declaration or in the description I saw in the pack, we've had this for a few days to look at, that specifically spoke to educational opportunities between our local students and their local students in Tanguans, which I thought was very, well, that's what sold it for me, I think that was really the piece of the pie that made a lot of sense, is that cross-cultural educational piece. Board members, you have any questions for Mr. Powers?
I spent time in a little town called Zabao on Mindanao, I liked it, would be nice to have something here.
Very close by, in the same province, I believe, yes.
Yeah, how big is Tagum City?
It's about 215,000, it's growing very rapidly, but it seems to be a very progressive city as well, especially, particularly the education aspect and culture.
If I could get out tonight, I'd run this over to them.
Record low of 66, so a nice temperature, so.
Oh, stop.
What brought them to Bennington?
The students in particular, or?
Well, the city in general, did they come to us, or is this an effort on Bennington College students?
More from Bennington College students, but again, it seemed to tie in very well with some of the experiences we've had with local people who are Filipino descent, or have emigrated to this area from the Philippines, and as we get to know more people, there seems to be a larger community that originally anticipated their being in Bennington, so. I think it might be a positive thing to involve them as well, and give them some extra cultural support.
I think it's always exciting to learn about other cultures and other countries, and you know, if you can't travel there, then bring it here, so I would support it.
I think it's a splendid idea, they'll be more interested probably a year from now, let's just see what your seed effort has produced, because it's all about collaboration of some, in some level, and I really appreciate the idea of the Quantum Leap program being involved, I can think that would certainly open the exchange.
I think it's great, some of the students in the area have probably not been more than a, you know, 50 or 100 mile radius, so it's definitely be quite a different cultural immersion, just being able to communicate with somebody from there.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion from any board members to?
A motion to authorize the manager to sign the memorandum.
So moved. Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
One thing we might ask is, sorry, how might private citizens be of help in this?
That's a good question. We're hoping to at least get some community awareness of the events that are happening, encourage participation, volunteerism to perhaps host this festival, kind of join alongside us, whether it's a business community, or whether it's private individuals that want to help out. I think there's definitely going to be expanding opportunities, and you know, we'll see how this festival goes, and kind of branch out from that point, possibly make it a recurring theme as well.
Sharon, would you read the declaration for the folks at home, please?
Sister Cities International Partnership Agreement ceremonial, whereas the towns of Tagum and Bennington share similar goals of international cooperation, mutual prosperity, and world peace, and whereas they believe it to be in their collective interest to broaden and strengthen the ties between the two cities, and whereas they place similar values on cultural understanding, youth education, community development, business and trade, and whereas they will identify activities common to all that can generate new initiatives to further nurture economic, social, and cultural relationships, and whereas the purpose of this relationship is to increase cultural understanding, educational opportunities, and business opportunities for both cities, and to increase awareness of both cities as being environmentally responsible, artistically diverse, and places for higher education, and whereas both cities are committed to mutual support for organizing and developing the experiences, common activities, and further programs of the Sister City relationship on the basis of previous agreements of mutual cooperation and directions set forth by this declaration. Now therefore, we, the mayors of Tagum and Bennington, do believe that this pact will further contribute to the cause of world peace and to develop, and to the development of friendly relations between the peoples of the Philippines and the United States and our two cities, and further affix our signatures and our city seals on this declaration to establish our relationship as Sister Cities.
Thank you. So moved.
Did we vote?
We did vote.
We kind of did.
So that passed, so we'll sign that and get that-
And you're on your way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the wetlands purchase authorization. Dan Monks, our Town Planning Director, will take us through that.
Hello, everyone, just a quick update on the wetlands project, and then a request for some action this evening on your part. I do have Donald Campbell here, who is with the Vermont Land Trust, who's been helping us through this process, so if I miss anything, he'll jump in and let me know. I am very happy to say that we have raised through fundraising, the Friends Group that has been trying to raise the funds to purchase this property, that we have raised sufficient funds to purchase the property, we're still hoping to raise a little bit more to do some improvements to the property, but we feel confident, is it fair to say, Donald, that we have the funds either in hand or on the way to purchase the property without any taxpayer money being involved. So, thank you to this community who is very generous, and we will be doing a press release very shortly to thank those folks and to give folks more information about how we're going to move forward with the project, but the community really did come out, and it was very generous, and we're very thankful for that. So what we're asking for this evening is formal authorization from the Select Board for two things. One, to authorize the transfer of the 160 acres plus of land known as the Morgan Street Wetlands, or alternatively, the Wulmsec Headwaters Park, we're still going to work out that name in the future with the management plan, the authorization of that transfer to the town of Bennington, that's number one, and number two, the conveyance of a conservation easement to the Vermont Land Trust, which will ensure that this property is conserved for public use in perpetuity. So, we would ask that you authorize those actions, and that the authorized staff, namely Stuart Hurd, to sign all necessary documents for that to occur. So that's our request this evening.
Okay, do you need a consensus for that, or any motion for that?
It'd be great to have a motion.
Motion. No, I think a motion is necessary. All right.
I would move that the town acquire the lands as per the potential offering, and that has been outlined in the, what was the memorandum date?
January 20?
January 15.
The January 15, 2015 memorandum, and authorize the Town Manager to execute any documents necessary to complete the acquisition.
And I'd second that.
Okay, any discussion more? Just looking at the first paragraph where it says the conservation easement will restrict the use of the wetlands for public recreation and conservation purposes, that's just saying that we have authority to decide what's going to happen there, is that what that?
Well, what's going to happen, and it's a good question. Both the Land Trust and the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, which is, Vermont Housing and Conservation Board is our primary public funder, require that the town develop a detailed management plan, tell me if I get this wrong, Donald. So far, so good. And that will be a very public process, where we will bring in folks, neighbors, community members, folks that have different interests in the property, and we will develop a management plan, come back to you folks, make sure that you're okay with it, and then we will present it both to the Land Trust and the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board for their approval. So it's probably going to be about a year-long process, where we very diligently go out seeking a public input, as well as your input, to make sure that that management plan fits the needs of the community. The Bennington County Conservation District, headed up by Shelley Stiles, has agreed to be the point organization on that process, so that, there's still a lot of work to do, but right now, obviously, the obvious uses that will be looked at carefully and most likely included will be hiking, and kayaking, and other outdoor recreation, fishing, outdoor recreation type uses, so all that will be, to be determined as far as the intensity of all those uses and the locations, but we will have a very detailed management plan for you folks to review and approve.
So with the way that this is set up, if the people of Bennington and, you know, the town staff believe that there's a purpose that's appropriate for that land, we could still get turned down, even though we all believe that it's appropriate?
Well, the purposes are very specifically laid out for public access and for recreation.
Okay.
It's the one thing that is clear, both from Vermont Housing and Conservation Board and the Vermont Land Trust, is it's non-motorized, so you're not going to have racetrack there, for instance, or BMX.
Okay, so that's where I was going with this, I wanted to know what the restrictions were looking like, just so we had an idea, because like you said, hiking, kayaking, fishing, all seem obvious, but if they hit the list of, you know, we're trying to conserve the, I don't know, the species of fish in this water, so there's no fishing, or whatever might be-
Nope, fishing, biking, hiking, kayaking, birding, all those kind of active recreation uses are clearly allowed.
So as of right now, with the groups that are involved in this project, really the only thing that we're trying to restrict is motorized vehicles?
Right, and also if we do any kind of land management, like forestry, those sorts of things, we would have to have a forestry plan, those sorts of things, and if we decide to build new trails, we need to make sure that we do them in a manner that's sensitive to the ecology of the area.
And, oh, you have a question?
Yeah, no housing and commercial uses, that's right. So it really is for public recreation.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
All in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you very much to all those who donated to this project.
Yeah, thanks for the work, everybody that's gone into this so far. All right, next item is going to be the microloan program redesignation. Michael Harrington, our Economic and Community Development Director.
Good evening. Last meeting, you saw a presentation by the Bennington Economic Development Partners, and they presented a list of strategies for 2015. One of the common and frequent conversations around the table when the group meets has been, how do we find the appropriate funding and financing to launch a lot of these projects going forward? At the same time, the conversations and work that we've done as a group in partnership with meeting with St. Albans made it clear that the ability for public investment back into the community and the economic development strategies is crucial and critical, and somewhat probably unorthodox compared to years prior, but it is nonetheless very important for the public to have some input in terms of helping to facilitate the necessary development that has to occur within a community. So, in conversation, we talked quite extensively about how we would identify funding sources and what that might look like, and there have been a number of different conversations around that. One of the ones that rose to the top was the redesignation of the microloan program, which is a program the town has had in place since 2009. There were a number of, I don't want to say bad loans, but loans that were done where they quickly became delinquent and then were unable to be paid back, and so because of that increased delinquency rate compared to our other loans, we paused that program and haven't issued any microloans out of that program. I think also there's a duplication there, because we do have a loan program, and the loan program, while not specifically in the description, is the same, there is opportunity for small businesses to access financing through the town with a minimum amount of $2,000 up to $35,000. So, recognizing that there is a system already for financing small business in town, we felt that an acceptable alternative use for that program would be to redesignate it and use those funds to help foster and launch the idea of reinvestment back into the community from a public source. And so you have a couple different memos, one that went out at the last meeting, and then the most recent one, and through conversations with the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager, we developed a preliminary program description of what that program might look like. I should emphasize, it's not on here, but obviously this is a draft, and changes can be made if we feel it's appropriate. But I think it gets back to the conversation we had at the budget meeting, work session, about how do we begin to finance some of these projects that we think are going to have a great impact on our economic vitality, and so this is a great step in the right direction. I'll answer any questions. I'll answer any questions.
What do you see as the annual contribution to a program like this from, from the town?
Well, I, I can only talk from examples that we've had. We'd be looking at an initial influx of about $135,000 that's currently in the loan program account, and then I think it's up to us to decide, what do we plan to do with this money and how do we plan to regenerate funds in the program? If you talk with our friends up in St. Albans, they eventually ended up with a program that was the size of about half a million dollars, and they began to use that to reinvest by purchasing properties and using it for grants and loans and a couple other projects to help promote business development. So I think this is certainly a great start, but that's the critical question of, what do we plan to do with this? Are we planning to dole it out in, in 10 and 15 and 20,000 increments, or are there some pretty grandiose ideas that we have about major investment? So I think the select, one of the conversations that the Select Board has to have and, along with the partners is saying, what are the projects that we see coming up? Do we want to turn this into something we invest in on an annual basis? Do we simply want to reinvest what is expended in a year? So if we expend $30,000, do we simply replenish the account? I think there's opportunity for private investment into that as well, so if there was fundraising opportunities or opportunities for the public to, to participate in the program, that would be an opportunity as well. So I, that part, I think we have to figure out what, and like I said, we'd be starting with 135-ish thousand dollars, and if we're talking about promoting some of the, the ongoing projects that we have, I think that's a, a great amount for us to start with. If we start talking larger investment and reinvestment projects, then we got to talk about how we're going to not only sustain that amount, but also increase that amount.
Right. And that's, that's kind of where I was going with this.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if the idea was to help, you know, use $10,000 here, $20,000 there, or if the idea was, you know, guys, we, we might not have a project now, but we have to start building this year in and year out, and so maybe five, six years from now, we might have something where we, we have some, the ability to throw, throw our hat in the ring. I didn't know, I wanted to understand where you were coming from.
I think it can, I think it can run the scope, so let me give you an example. It may be something as simple as identifying a building and working with a possible developer on a facade program where we maybe designate $50,000 to, to facade work that's going to happen with that building. It could be something where maybe a develop, maybe one of the roadblocks that's preventing a developer from wanting to look at a property or a location seriously as a market study or a leakage analysis, and we might be able to then develop that study where it would become the town's study, and we could contract out with a, an appropriate firm, and we could use that study to help work with the developer on that project. I mean, it can go all the way up to identifying a particular piece of land or property and saying, it's, it's more important for, for us to spark the development there, and so we want to be one of the major investors in acquiring that piece of property. But I think it can, it can run the scope from whatever, whatever we, and I'm, I say that collectively, determine is a good economic development project. And so if we say one of the things that we're lacking in Bennington is, you know, bike and ped access, then we may say we want to use $10,000 of this account to finish Phase One of the ninja bike path. You know, if we feel that that's going to be a project that is crucial down the road, or at least one part of a project, I think it can span the, the realm and we kind of outline what that might look like.
I do think we have to be careful there, and we might have to draw a line as to what this is going to be going towards, because if we say this can be used towards small projects across the board and we also hope it builds up, we're going to find ourselves spending $10,000 this year or this week, and then $20,000 next week, and then when a big project comes, we're going to realize, guess what, the piggy bank's empty. So, I, I love this idea, but I, and either way, I think it's a good idea, but we need to decide as a town what direction and what we're trying to accomplish here. And like I said, there's benefits to both, to working on a bike path or, or increasing, or beautifying Bennington with $10,000, $20,000. But if, you know, if we're, we're trying to get that new business to move here and they need a half million dollars, then we have to have a different goal in mind and we're going to have to stick to it. So, I, I understand where you're saying, we can use, use this one way or another, but I think it will have to be defined.
Yep.
And that's, that's where I was getting nervous with the $1,000 spends and $5,000 spends. I think where people often go wrong is thinking, this isn't a big deal, you know, I have the money, and then all of a sudden, 20 times abusing, you know, spending a $1,000 bill, all of a sudden, it's, it's gone.
Small money, small money gives you small results.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Small money gives you small results.
And I just, yeah, and I think this is very important, and so we have to understand what way we want to go, and we'll draw the line in the sand and stick to it.
Sure.
Yeah. We currently have microloans outstanding.
We do.
Is, are the payments from those microloans going to go back into this fund, or are they going somewhere else?
We would have to determine what that would look like.
I mean, typically, they would go back into the.
Into this fund.
They came out of.
Yep. So we could certainly determine, and the Select Board could decide that any funds that are recouped through outstanding loans go back into this. There's not a lot outstanding, and I don't know that off the top of my head, but we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
How much of that do you think is recoverable from the loans that have been made, or is it to be written off?
I think a, a good percentage of those, probably 75 or 80% of those are active and giving and, and recouping on a regular basis. So, there's only, I think, two or three that I think are really far out, and we probably, probably won't get there.
Tom?
I, I, this is just a work, a working draft.
Yes.
And maybe it'd be helpful, but I tend to agree with John. As soon as I see numbers like $1,000, I lose interest real quick in the program itself. I'd rather not have dollar amounts, and, and now I think I have a better understanding as far as your comment about projects. I just see this as basically a program in the form of grants or loans to enhance the development and redevelopment. And I hate if we get too many possible uses, then we're going to be nipping at the edge of this, these funds, and we're not going to have a big enough pot to help the, those developers or, or our projects.
Yep.
So just have that in mind when you continue with your, your drafting. Those are my immediate reactions. But I think it's a great way to enhance the town's involvement financially, because as you and Michael and others heard when we visited in St. Albans, the town has to invest. It has to be a financial participant in the enhancement of the community. And frankly, this is a start to doing that, but I do think it's just a start. And some folks will be upset, but I think we really need to look at this as an annual budget line item. And that's not something we did this year, but I think we have to start looking at it going forward.
I tend to agree with that, and my suggestion would be to budget this program. One of the issues I see is that we really don't have a significant marketing budget per se for the town of Bennington. As an organization this size with our precise budget, it would be unusual, you know, for a commercial company or private business not to have a marketing budget that fit it. And I think we're in a position sometimes where, you know, we want to have a seat at the table, or we want our name on something to, to get behind it and make it happen, that's not that big. And on the other hand, when something comes along that we, we want to embrace, we want to have a, you know, a, something available, some resources available to make it happen. Next, next meeting, we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation on the visit to St. Albans, and some of those points and some of the programs that they have will be highlighted. Michael's putting that together. So, you know, I would, I would say, well, let's take a look at that presentation and get some ideas from that and see what we got.
If I might, following up on what John and Tom have both said, there is an opportunity. As you know, in the last two years' current budgets, we've, we've budgeted $50,000 annually as a contingency amount of money dealing with the Coker Drive landfill site. If in fact that site concludes effectively this year, and we suspect it will, there is an opportunity, without raising the budget, to continue that $50,000 as a direct donation to this particular fund as a reserve. So there, there are opportunities within the, the existing budget to do this without actually raising the budget any higher than it is.
And it might be next year, there'd be something else, too. Great if we can do it as a budget neutral. I mean, that's what we all strive for, increase the grand list, but keep the budget neutral. And I guess my comment or concern is that we don't just let this drift into a program that has funds, but we're not using it for the reason that we want.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that some, this, this is more of an opportunity for the town to be able to initiate some action, as opposed to the revolving loan fund or the original program where we're just waiting for citizens who had an idea and wanted to try and had a high-risk loan available. This is, you know, something where maybe the private market just doesn't have the belly for the risk or, 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 you know, the immediate turnaround, as I'm seeing in a lot of business. If there's not an immediate turnaround on it, they don't want to get involved in it. We see where, you know, corporations are stockpiling cash, they're not making the investments in communities that we used to see. If, if we have an opportunity, we have a resource to act on it.
I think you also want to make sure you use it for strategic moves, not just any, anything that comes along.
I, I will say, I think one of the important things to keep in mind, too, is that we're linking the funds to either programs that, that where the town becomes a mutually benefiting party, or also it's going towards upgrades that can long last beyond whatever that specific business is. And so if, you know, I will use the example from St. Albans, they were able to link the start of their redevelopment back to one project, and that project was a $50,000 grant for facade improvements and $100,000 loan at zero or 1% interest, something like that. So, but in the end, it didn't matter, the business or the purchase of the property, but the property was redeveloped and could be then reused and maintained at an acceptable level. So I also want us to encourage to think about those types of investments that will long last and outlast the businesses, and that, that comes from investing in, in infrastructure, in market analysis, and things that we can then own and maintain afterwards as well.
How would you see putting the business case together for any one of these projects that might come across?
Specifically, I, there are a couple of different things that come to mind. We have a, a number of different businesses, private businesses that we're working with right now, and we're talking about development projects, and due to confidentiality, I don't want to necessarily share those, but they're each looking for something different, and there's a different way that we can help each one of those. And so I could see town staff working with that developer on a specific project, putting together a presentation to the Select Board, either in the form of an official application or simply just a presentation that outlines the scope of the project, what the needs are, and what we think the eventual outcomes will be from the investment, the return on investment, and, and then it's up to the Select Board to determine whether that's an appropriate use of those funds. The, the smaller amounts where you're talking, you know, 500 or $1,000 were simply more, are there, what are there other ongoing projects? And, you know, last year, the Select Board allocated $3,000 to the Bennington Economic Development Partners for things like the Sophomore Career Day and Career Summit and Sophomore Summit, excuse me, and the Shires, South Shire Challenge. So again, it was, how do we maintain some of these programs that we've already begun to support? So again, I don't see that as being, you're going to go through, you know, maybe 20 different $1,000 projects in a year. It may be one or two, depending on what the group decides. And I just didn't want to have to, go ahead, Tom.
I, I just think that those should be carved, carved out of this.
Sure.
This program.
Yeah.
And there should be a standalone under another title.
Yeah, and I think that's great. I mean, the reason I'm here is to get feedback so we can continue the, the process, so, great.
Mr. Colvin, you have something to add to this? Bill Colvin from the Bennington County Regional Commission.
Bill Colvin, BRCRC, a member of the Economic Development Partners, and as many of you know, was intimately involved in the development of the Bennington Strategic Economic Development Plan. I'd like to wholeheartedly endorse what I hear is a very exciting opportunity to begin the creation of an economic development fund for the town of Bennington. I think the redesignation of what is functionally underperforming assets already in the control of the town is an excellent start to this program. Transferring that money to more productive use, I think, is, is highly valuable. Heard some great comments this evening from a number of board members, which are, I think, even more exciting. I would encourage, this is, if we look at this year as kind of a test program to get the town's feet wet and understand what this program look, looks like, I would hope that we would move very quickly through Stu's suggestion, those made by Tom, to begin to find a sustainable funding mechanism to make this really an ongoing opportunity, another tool in the toolkit, if you will, for the town to be a true public-private partner in economic development opportunities. I've not seen the proposal or the memo with regard to what the program structure may look like. I would suggest that perhaps there's an opportunity to define projects by their impact. There's a number of ways, rather than dollar amounts as we move forward. Impact could be measured by the identification of critical properties in town, perhaps. Impact could be measured by the opportunity to leverage private funding to bring to a project. So there's, I think, a number of ways to define impact that gets us away from dollar amounts and helps to bring some formation to this program. So, I think it's an exciting opportunity, and I thank certainly the town staff and the board for, for considering this as a way to move our economic development efforts forward.
Could I suggest that maybe to the chair, Mr. Colvin could participate with Mike on that, that effort?
I think the, the expectation, too, would be that this would go before the Economic Development Partners.
So we'll see it afterwards, go through that.
And if either of you come across any similar programs that are already written out that are functioning, you know, it'd be, it'd be great to see how they're, how they're laid out and how they're, how they're operating, what the feedback is on them.
And Mike, I don't, I don't know if you, in any of your conversations with St. Albans' city manager, whether he talked about whether they have an official program in place for accessing those funds, or?
It's becoming official. Up to now, you know, when, when they started this, it was, in a sense, know what they had to do. The big, the big issue was for them, if we don't invest in our town, why do we expect somebody else to invest in our town? That was the, that was the trigger event. And we could talk a lot more about what they have done, and we'll, we'll do that two weeks from now, and we'll bring in some examples of similar public-private partnerships, in, in fact, in other parts of the country.
So the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, that I would ask is if specific board members have thoughts, if they could just pass them to me by email, I'll make sure I incorporate them as we move through the process of developing this fund.
As I listen to everyone come up and talk, we, we currently have a program that's quote-unquote failing, that we want to take money from and, and put it into a different area, right? That's, that's one thing that we're looking to do here. If we have a failing program, I think that can come up separately and say, hey, let's move this money and push it to an area where we're ready to allocate it as a board. And I understand the critical nature and, and in having these funds available at all times, and if we, if we spend the next six months developing a rigorous, you know, process, that'll be great, and, and an understanding of where we want to put that money, this, that'll be a good thing. But if you're looking for something immediately, I'd recommend removing that program, requesting that we move the money to an area that can be allocated at the Select Board's discretion only, the Select Board's discretion, and if we really want to put a cap on it until we have a robust process in place, I would say a unanimous decision of the Select Board only. And then we have funds there, we'll have them available, we'll put something in process to have them grow, but we don't have a failing program in, in our hands right now. And then you can come to us whenever we have something available. If it's a new business wanting to come to town, it's there, it's ready, instead of having to say, well, in four months, we can move it from this failing program to an area where it's accessible. So, right now, I think this is a little too, too new, too fresh to really have something robust in place, but if we were to eliminate the program, move the money, a unanimous, unanimous decision by the Select Board only, not a six to one, not a five to two, that, that gives us at least a little bit of an option moving forward, until we get something in place. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but.
There might be some regulations based on where the money originally came from, but Stu, do you have any?
Well, yeah, I was, I was going to suggest, in a sense, John is correct. Part of what we're proposing here is to redesignate those funds, which would actually. we're proposing here is to redesignate those funds, which would actually eliminate the microloan program, recreate a Bennington Economic Development Fund. I think the, the description that we have provided to you, we would like your input, but it might be appropriate, following the presentation of the St. Albans visit at the next meeting, to, at the very least, establish this fund, that's where you, how you designate the money to be used, and tweak this to the desire of the board, but at least put it in play. And that would be my suggestion. If we can do that at the next meeting, that would be fantastic.
We're looking for agreement in principle about this, while I'm working out the details here.
Yeah, you don't necessarily have to get into the, yeah, dirty details
Exactly.
Or the clean details, depending on
And what I'm hearing is that the board pretty much wants to reallocate this money to something we can do something with, right?
Yeah, I think that's pretty unanimous right now.
I think basing off of what John and Stu had said, creating the, creating the fund is one piece, determining how it's going to be accessed and used is, is the second, the second piece to that.
And I don't want to allow ourselves to put our hands in the jar until that's established, unless it's a unanimous decision at the, at the board level only. So that's, that was where my recommendation came from, to allow you to have what you need when going out there and doing your job.
Okay, well, let's take a look at that, that presentation next time. Good thoughts to Mike between now and then, and we'll come up with some ideas.
Great.
I think that's the direction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, Town Manager, Town Manager's Evaluation Process Adoption. We've been talking about this a good portion of 2014. I'm going to kick this to Michael. We have a subcommittee of Michael Keen and Sharon Brush and John McFadden working on this for several months. Appreciate your work on that. Michael, you want to?
It's done. Well, you, what we have to do tonight is vote. We provided you with an updated job description for the Town Manager, which was reviewed by Stuart Hurd and Michelle Johnson. We've provided you with a performance appraisal tool, which we developed and reviewed with Stu, with Michelle, and with Dan Monks. And everybody appears to agree that this is a good, workable start. So instead of waiting more weeks to say, gee, did we read this enough? Did we read this enough? I'd be looking for a vote.
Okay.
A vote to accept the updated job description, a vote to accept the performance appraisal tool.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I don't want the three of us to
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
It's perfectly fine.
Well, that's, yeah, that's
The pickings are slim.
That's true.
Okay, so we have a motion on the board. Any discussion? John, do you have any one to throw in here?
No.
We've been talking about this.
Appreciate the work. I think everyone
Well, the, the next part of the process, then, once we have approved all of this, is for the Chair to designate two of us, three of us, to
To implement
Begin dialogue with Stu, to come up with agreed-upon metrics for each of these, and then go from there.
All right. And this, again, this has been, this was initiated because there was no real review process for the Town Manager by the board, and no record or benchmark of his performance, or the performance in the position at all. We're following, basically, the, the town standards for human resources, as well as models used in, in business and government. So, again, I appreciate it. You have any other comments? We'll go to vote.
No further comments.
No further? Okay. All in favor? That is five in favor. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
So we now have a question.
To us.
All right. Number nine, we have approved the 2015 Annual Town Warning.
You have the warning before you. I was just glancing through it, and the deadline for registering to vote is February 25th at 5:00 PM at the Town Clerk's Office. So that deadline is established in the warning, and I know that was a question earlier in the meeting, and I hope people hear what I have to say. But the, the annual town meeting is pretty standard. This year, we will be electing two Select Board members for three-year terms. We will be electing a town clerk who shall be elected for a three-year term. This is a position that is not set to fill out the term of the past clerk, because the charter establishes a three-year term. When that election is held, the individual or individuals running shall be for the three-year term. We're looking for approval in Article One on the sums of money, $11.65 million budget. I won't go into the breakdowns. We have, I think, 13 agencies who are pursuing funding. We list them on the warning from the lowest to the highest amount of funds, and that has been pretty much established in the past, other warnings. And then the final article is the question on fluoridation of the municipal water system. And here, I've had to work with council fairly closely to, to adjust the question that came before us in the petition signed by more than 500 voters. The question that we will be voting on is, shall the town of Bennington adjust the natural level of fluoride in the Bennington water system to a level recommended for preventing tooth decay? That is mostly what the petition involved. It did have some editorial comments involved improving tooth decay or improving dental hygiene of the community that we felt was a little too editorialized. I can tell you that there were some objections even to the wording we selected, but it states the purpose of the vote and the limits of the installation of fluorine should the vote pass. And the council felt that that was appropriate to leave in. So I present it to you for your approval and signatures.
And we'll just remind voters who are not that familiar with it, we do not govern the school system, so there are not, there's not a listing of people running for school boards here. There is not a school budget on our warning. That's why you're not hearing anything about it. Those are handled by the specific school boards involved.
I would note, Greg, if I could, and I may be stealing your thunder, but
Sure.
At some point in February, perhaps the second meeting in February, we will be once again doing a combined presentation of the two budgets, the Mount Anthony BSD budget and the town budget at a regular meeting of the Select Board, just as we did last year.
I believe that's the 23rd, is that the Monday?
I think so, yeah.
Yes, the February 23rd, right here at 6:00 PM. And, yeah, so, so you will get a, people from the school systems and, and the Select Board and town staff here for questions or to go through those budgets, and the tax implementation, implement, implications. I'm having trouble with words tonight. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, the town warning?
I'll second it.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Stuart, if all of the petitioned items and the budgeted items are approved, do you have an estimated tax rate for 15, 16 yet?
I'm not sure I brought that with me. It's going to be in the range of an increase based on the revenues that we have as of today. And we've talked about this during the budget process. There are so many variables in, in what we will have available to us when we're ready to set the budget, set the tax rates in May and June. But at the present time, it's 3.5 cents. I, I think, 3.5 to 3.6 cents. If the articles, which total 122,000 plus, are approved, that might add a penny, a little more than that, perhaps.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the floor, all in favor. That is unanimous. So, the warnings have been adopted. On Article 15, the Bennington Water Fluoridation Question, there will be a forum on the 12th of February, right here, from 6:30 to 8:30, with a panel available for people to ask questions of with concerns or questions on how it works, where the recommendations came from. The Oral Health Committee will make their presentation explaining the, where the, where the recommendation came from, and then there'll be a Q and A after that. So we invite people to that as well.
So in the interest of fairness, we should mention there's also a forum on the 19th as well.
And there's a forum on the 19th on the negative impacts of fluoridation. So this will be on the whole picture. All righty. Number 10, we have some liquor license applications.
Yes, this is a pretty standard now. We, those that are renewals, we simply circulate in a sense a memorandum for your signature, where you approve first-class licenses and second-class license renewals, and I will circulate those for your signature, as you have them in your packet.
Thank you. And the managers' report?
I don't have a managers' report this evening. You've already announced the, the closing of the Rec Center and the Senior Center. We are asking that people who have a tendency to park their vehicles out in front of their homes, even though it is illegal during this time of year, to please remove your vehicles from the street. We are expecting blizzard conditions at times during the nighttime. We do not want to have any incidents with snow plows in very, very difficult conditions, essentially plowing into the backs of parked cars that are, should not be there. And we are asking that people who walk in, into town or through town in the morning, please use extra care. It is unlikely that the sidewalks will be entirely clear. We have 40 miles of sidewalks, two machines. They will be active from approximately 4:00 AM on, but it is unlikely that all of the sidewalks will be clear and open for easy travel. So please, if you can delay your getting out in the morning, we ask that you do so. It's, it could be a very difficult period, early morning to noon time or so.
The, the snow is expected to go from tonight through to Wednesday morning, so if the machine comes through and the snow keeps coming, don't hesitate to go out and clean up a little after the machine and, and keep your walkways clear. It could be a while before you see that machine get back to you with, with the expected snow. So, I mean, we're looking at probably about a foot of snow between now and Wednesday, anyway. But if that storm shifts a little, a few clicks to the west, it could be a significant change in the forecast.
We're still, the last report we had from Emergency Management in Vermont is 16 to 21 inches in Bennington County. It may be elevational
Right.
In nature, so it may be that those of us who are lucky to live in the valley may get a little bit less than that. But certainly, we expect that the higher elevations will get significant snowfall. It will be light and fluffy, but that means it'll be wind-driven, so.
Yeah, a lot of wind, so. Great. Stu, do we, do we want to discuss anything about the Rutland memo here?
Well, you have a memorandum. I simply sent it out for your information and determined whether or not you wanted to act on it. This would probably be an agenda item at a future meeting, should you decide to do so. The town of Rutland is requesting other communities in the state of Vermont to set up some sort of solar siting standards. If you've been following the, the news in that portion of the state, Rutland Town has had a longstanding battle, a number of members of the community, with a particular solar farm and the location that it has chosen. They are not having sufficient success, I would say, at the Public Service Board level, and I know they are pushing also legislation this year that will force the Public Service Board to recognize local standards when it comes to the siting of solar farms or other renewable energy products, projects in a community. So if you wish, we can put this on for discussion at a future agenda, if you see that it has merit. And, and I leave that to you.
I'd, I'd like to hear a recommendation, you know, from our planning director, maybe even the BRCRC, on what the experiences have been. I, I do understand that we have to, you know, establish parties, you know, that we want party status in one of these conversations, should it come up. There isn't a lot of weight sometimes to the discussion, but, you know, in this last one, they, they did cite our town plan. They did talk to, you know, a lot of people about what our plans were before we were there. So I'd like to hear some of the input from people with the experience. Sound good?
Sounds great.
All righty. Other business, Thomas?
Nothing.
Michael?
Zero.
Sharon?
Nothing, just stay safe.
All right, John?
All set.
All right, we're good. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Get home safely. And if you don't need to travel tomorrow and the roads are bad, please don't travel. Thank you very much.
You need a move?
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
We're done.
We are done here.